In the public hearing for the 2022 budget. The public hearing for the 2022 budget is open. Are there any speakers wishing to address the council on the 2022 budget? Seeing none, I will close the hearing for the 2022 budget. Counsel, are there questions about the 2022 budget?
I'll make a motion then to adopt the 2022 budget as published.
There is a motion and a second to adopt the 2022 budget as published. All those in favor, please show a voting sign. Motion passes.
I have three copies if everyone will just sign wherever.
Uh, MOPAC. Item B, MOPAC agreement.
Mayor and counsel, in closing your packet is agreement I had city attorney look over. It's with Wildlife and Parks to fund the grant or the extension of the MOPAC trail. That is the biggest portion of the funding for the trail extension. And the other portions coming from the sunflower grant that we already received. There should be little to no expense from the city as far as funding goes. Lots of man kind labor, but asking for approval of the necessary documents with Wildlife and Parks.
And this would basically finish out that trail east-west, which would now go the entire, pretty much entire east-west distance now.
Right, and it generally end up somewhere behind Super 8 or Sterling 6, 7.
Have we already secured all the land lays on that? I know there's one time there's some questions.
No, we, we got the property on First Street with condemnation of that house through trade on that. And the rest is already public road right away, all the way to Kentucky. The school piece is actually on school property. And then the other piece, the last, what I call the last third, will probably be on the railroad street right away, depending on, you know, how that works when we start putting it in. But we should have, the only easement we may need to give is from Mr. Bagby of years. So, he's, we want to talk to him.
Corey, where does it currently stop at the school? Is it right there by the tennis courts?
Correct. It stops on the west side of the tennis courts, Steve. And we won't run that through the school property. There's some good four or five foot sidewalk all the way around that facility. We'll go over, I guess if you envision the old backstops over there, we'll tie into that existing sidewalk across the street there. And then there's a, for lack of better terms, there's an alley easement or an old railroad piece that the city owns that gets you over to that other property from the Currys that we got, gosh, in the last year, early this year.
I will say on my run walk dogs, whatever slow movement they are now in this heat, the MOPAC is one of the more traveled trails. I always see somebody on it, Mark, and I know that you walk.
And we're, we're gonna have to do something where MOPAC can, something except for that sidewalk, we're gonna have to kind of curve that off because bicyclists cut across it anyways. And the other two corners are already wide enough to where they could hike the corner.
And we'll be having, I've already had one public meeting with landowners down through there with the intent to have another one as the project starts to get kicked off. A lot of this will be in kind. We'll buy the screenings, it's all gonna be screenings. We'll, we'll bid it out to do concrete work and the handicap ramps up each street. We'll probably paint all the lines for the crossings and put all the pedestrian ahead crossing signs on the streets as well internally.
When do you envision this to start?
I mean, as soon as we sign the grant agreements, we can, we can start on it anytime after, after we get signed documents back from Wildlife and Parks.
This was only labor intensive for us.
Correct. Yeah, there should be no, the only thing that paid for wrong essentially for this project upfront was the piece of that condemnation of the house, the lot. And then we did survey work probably a year ago where it felt a little better to get those bins set. It'd be very low.
Can school plan done that's, when they did their?
Yeah, I think so. It was, it also doubles as their fire lane for the fire guys to get in and out of there on the north side of that property. I, it's in the original plans and then they, I think they started talking about scaling it back a little and then it got, you know, when we told them our funding was really wrapped by that because the plan was to see it all across the property. It is included last I knew with the school property.
Can I get a motion here?
I make a motion that we approve and offer our staff to execute the necessary documents with the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks for the MOPAC recreational trail project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to agree to the Kansas Wildlife, Department of Wildlife and Parks MOPAC Trail Extension Funding. All those in favor, please show a voting sign. Opposed, motion passes. Roxanne, is this just council signature or do you need mine on it too?
No, yours also.
Item C, Thrive Labor Study.
Good evening, council. So I'm here this evening to ask city council to assist in the funding of a labor study for Allen County. And I'm asking for a couple of reasons. One, Allen County has long needed an up-to-date labor study. One that's detailed and one that focuses on the quality and quantity of the local workforce. And two, since Iowa is the largest community in Allen County, in my mind, it makes sense for Iowa to have a part in that funding. We have the newly released census data that can be useful. I would consider this a far more targeted approach at ground level, a focus on what our labor pool looks like compared to, say, a 35,000 foot view with the census. The census data can be useful, but this will be, in my mind, far more useful. Does the council have any questions on that? I know I shared some of the benefits in your packets.
One's the business one's been done.
I could not find a record of one having been done, so not to say that it hasn't, but if there had been, it's not been recently.
Matt, if the council approves this, what funding source? Probably our economic development industrial fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much are you asking for?
Uh, $1,500. What I will do is, whatever council decides, I'll stand before Allen County Commission tomorrow and ask them to fund the rest outside of whatever she has agreed to fund, and that's that $8,000.
Have you approached Humboldt about, or the other entities about funding?
I approached Humboldt. They declined just because they have a small economic development budget and they're gonna focus that on housing at times, so they are not going to fund.
So what, how does this relate to what is provided through the state in their, in the data that they collect on a regular basis?
There's gonna be some overlap in data that's collected by the state. Again, this is gonna be a far more ground level targeted approach. Any one of these entities will conduct interviews with some of our largest employers and gather that data that I don't believe the state has as it relates to a couple of the items that I highlighted on that benefit. For example, job satisfaction among employee survey respondents. You're gonna see some of the population, labor force size, some of those numbers, working status, but desired salary, hourly rate wage is also some data that can be useful.
So you, you stated here that the cost is estimated at 20,000 depending on the firm selected. Has there been a, an estimate provided by one of the firms so that gives you an idea of that 20,000 or will, will the cost be, could be more, it could be less?
No, it will be, it will be what's stated.
Carl, that, I just averaged that. Your second page has got the three, you know, the three bit or really three estimates that that job is provided.
Okay.
Now, there are certain nouns that we can pursue, but those are the, those are the hard costs.
Is it possible that this, this day and age is going to hurt us considering that pretty well everybody that has a job right now that wants one has one. And people that don't really want to work are not looking to get a job. So when we look at things and they say, well, we've got, you know, 10,000 people in Allen County that aren't working, is that really gonna appeal to places that might come here?
It will be of interest to businesses that are looking to expand or relocate. This just really pays, paints a, a clear picture of what that labor force looks like if you've got people that are looking to change jobs.
And I completely understand. I'm guessing that we want to paint that picture right now.
I understand.
I, I would agree with you because right now there are lots of jobs available and lots of people who don't want to work.
I haven't had to get 15 jobs today. So.
So I wonder if the timing is not good for it. I don't know.
I might add that the benefit of this too is it benefits our local businesses. So if they are looking to expand, add to their current workforce, this gives an idea of what's available.
I see some of the value of this could be with the CTE, with the CTE Center, our tech center, there's just open as well of what needs are needed in the community for the future kind of training, you know, and get hard data for them to, you know, that's a, that's a big joint partnership with 257, Neosho, Allen, Fort Scott. And I think that might be helpful to know exactly what businesses are looking for in the area versus what we think businesses are looking for.
That's true. And I get, I get that. I totally get that. I guess my, my real concern is, is we all know what they're looking for, but if they can't get it here, is that something that we want to promote and give back statistics on?
Is there any way that we could take this study and use it for internal research ultimately?
No. It publicly funded. It needs to be a public document.
No, Ron, I echo what you say that that's a valid concern, but I also wonder, we've all done our fair share of assuming why those don't want to work don't work. We've heard the reasons. I've not had really anyone walk up to me and say, I choose not to work because the stimulus I'm getting is more. We've heard that, but how would people answer? Now, pre-stimulus, this problem started showing up pre-stimulus. You and I both have hired people. I've hired people that I let go after a couple hours. I've hired people that gave a chance and let them, let them hang on for a week. And, and I'm finding more, I'm just lazy. I don't want to learn. I don't know what it is. So if the study could focus on stuff like that as well, I think it'd be good to know.
Like work ethic.
Is it the stimulus or is it work ethic?
There is none.
I, I just don't want to work because I think as a community, we have to start looking at that. And, you know, we've had the, the bridges to poverty or poverty to whatever, try to teach people checkbooking and accounting and balancing their finances. You know, right now, we're making a lot of assumptions with nothing in writing and I, you know, I can see the benefit of it in that sense.
And possibly some of that, Steve, is there's a lot of kids in grade school that don't want to go to college and they do want that career in tech ed. So do we need to start focusing things more on career and tech ed and keeping our kids here with their career in tech ed instead of saying, oh, go to the four-year university, go do something, you know, whatever. So I, I mean, I see the value too, but I also agree with what you're saying as far as the middle school.
I think it's just a catch 22 no matter.
But that's not just, but that's not just here. That's everywhere.
Right, I completely agree with that.
Everywhere you drive in the United States, it's help wanted after help wanted after help wanted after help on it.
I mean, at the end of the day, at, at the end of the day, the issue is what, the issue is what it is. We all know that there's jobs available. We all know that there are people that are not working. We just don't know the answer to the question, why? And, you know, we can do whatever, we, we can do the study and not do the study, but at the end of the day, I mean, you're right, this asks the question, why? We can see it black and white. This is, you know, maybe it's the kinds of jobs that are available, maybe it's the types of benefits being offered.
The pay, the benefits.
And there's a lot of money being offered by every key to do this study, so.
Where, where are you gonna get your samples from? Are you gonna go to the, to the schools? Are you gonna go to the work, to the manufacturers? Or are you gonna just walk down the street?
That would depend on the firm selected.
Is it like a mail-in thing or something?
I know at the Fort Hays State Docking Institute, it's typically a single blind study. There would be interviews on the ground, it would be a population check. At the time, I was in college there, Dr. Soon was one of the major, one of the heads of that. They do a really good job as far as making sure that their research is thorough, so.
Well, I mean, I, I just don't want them coming in and, you know, studying or taking information from the working force, you know, there's a whole broad spectrum of people out there. You know, if they just go to the manufacturers or the schools, they're not gonna get a true feeling of what's going on, let's say, in the streets.
I guess my other thoughts on it are if it's going to be like other studies where we pay for them and not use the data, if we're going to pay for it, let's make sure the data's going to be used.
Absolutely. Yes, this won't be a, a book game at a bookshop. Yeah, we need to use the data for sure.
So how do you get the data?
They gather through a variety of sources, first-person interviews, telephone calls, they are here physically. They all differ a little bit in their labor studies and their approaches. I've never done one, so I've never been in the trenches and actually experienced it, but they have a variety of tools for gathering data.
Council, does somebody on council want to make, are we wanting to continue? Carl, do you have a?
I'm ready to make a motion. I make a motion that we support the labor study request from Thrive in the amount of $1,500.
There is a motion and a second to support the labor study for $1,500. All those in favor, please show a voting sign. Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
EMS discussion. Hold on a real quick. Counsel, I know there's been some frustration. I know that you all would like to vent for a second. We're gonna do this in an organized orderly fashion. I'm gonna give you once around it and I'm gonna go around the table. You get to say your one piece of frustration so far at this and then we're gonna move on to the business at hand. I know a lot of you have expressed frustration online and the paper to me, to, to others. And so I'd like to give you your opportunity here, but I also want to make it brief and move on to the business in front of us. Anyone wishing to go first?
I'll start. I just, I, I personally am disappointed. We are a small community. We support local business and the county has now stepped away from supporting the local business, the local citizens, our employees that live here and gone with a company that is nationwide, that is located, their headquarters are located in Colorado, and we preach, preach, preach by local. And to me, it's, it's just very disheartening, so.
Steve, I'd like to remind my fellow council members, this isn't a time to personally bash any of the county, county members. Business is business and they have their right to do what they did. And I'd like us to stay professional. And on that note, you know, we, we've got a service to continue to provide per gentleman's agreement. We're gonna uphold that gentleman's agreement. And I know all these individuals behind us and the ones not here, each and every one of them, I believe, are, are those type of professionals that will hang in there with us as we sort out the details and figure out what we're doing next. And let's just continue to move forward as professionals, just like the service has been for several years.
I want to say thank you to all the people behind me, that they've done a fabulous job. They're compassionate, they're knowledgeable, they're caring. I'm trying to keep it as professional as possible. I feel like there was no negotiation, that that word was a joke from the very beginning, that it was decided way before negotiating started. And so I hope we can decide the right thing tonight to support these people behind us.
Thank you. Ron?
I put mine into a letter, so I, I wanted to make sure I didn't forget anything. It's hard to put into words the disappointment and anger that I have with the county commission at this point. To say that this was a setup prior to RFPs ever being talked about is an understatement. When the county officials stated that this would be an open and fair way of bidding services, I believe that they lied to every person in this room and in this county. When RFPs were developed and released, it was very clear this was set up in a way that the county could manipulate the contract in a way to deal with the city by all its providing. To our employees and citizens, I'm here to tell you that we, the city, tried to make a deal in good faith. A deal that would benefit the city and county, most importantly, Allen County residents. The game the county commission played is downright childish and disheartening. This was so set up that the county doesn't even have a contract in place right now for EMS services come January 1. The company that they selected to use could now back out of talks or raise their prices since they're not obligated to anything at this point and leave this county without EMS services. What poor management of an emergency service. I am sorry to our employees that have wondered if they still have a job, if we'll still have a job and are still waiting to see. The county commission decided that it was better to have a national company run our local services and send millions of dollars out of our county in salaries and tax dollars that won't be spent here. I urge everyone to remember this instance when it comes time to vote for county commission and ask yourself if they have your best interests in mind. And the county commission, thanks for shopping local.
Well, I was asked last week by the registrar to make some comments and since then I've given more thought to this issue and I persuaded to change my opinion. I think when we went through this process in 2013, it was very, I mean, it had some beneficial effects, but it was a very painful process to go through for a whole year trying to negotiate the contract. And the contract started, I believe, in January of 2014. And since then, we have, my estimation that we have subsidized the cost of the EMS operation to the tune of 200,000 to 300,000 each year. That means that since 2014, I think we've contributed about 2.4 million to the operation of the EMS in the county. I, I wish the county had decided to go with the city and continued and given us a little more revenue to, to operate our emergency medical service. I think that AMR is a company that has done a good job, but the challenge is when you contract with an outside agency, then part of that funding that goes to them is for somebody outside of the city. And so we're essentially subsidizing an outside company where I, I would prefer that though the funding would stay inside the city and we would use our own existing county resources. So I, even though I, I don't like the arrangement of having dual services, if we elect to support or continue a service for the area within the city limits and the county decides that they want to go ahead with supporting, using AMR for Humboldt, Moran, that kind of creates the situation we were in before. And I would hate to see that, but I, I would, I think I would change my tune a little bit and support a service, if that's the consensus of the city, to at least try to continue the service within the city limits.
Well, first off, I won't let all those people sitting over there in blue know. I said right here in open council, I said that we was gonna fight for your guys' jobs and ladies' jobs. I feel like personally I've let you guys down with the way things have happened, but I won't let you know this council has fought and we will continue to fight for you guys. Don't give up on us yet. I feel betrayed, disheartened. I still feel the knife in my back over what went on. I honestly feel, I made this statement before to some other people, no matter what our dollar figure would have been, the county already had their mind made up, even though I didn't want to believe it. I think they did. And moving forward, we need to act as professionals and do everything we can to save you guys' and ladies' jobs sitting over there in blue and hopefully get a service that I can trust 'cause I feel AMR comes in, if they don't hire you guys that know everybody, that are sympathetic and empathetic with the people you know, they bring in people and I've talked, I got doctors' friends that said that AMR does not run the type professionalism when it comes to care as we run. And there's one person that's worked with a lot of UEMAS people. And he's afraid to see that come back within Iowa. I want to keep the same service that we have if any way possible.
So I want to thank the firefighters, the staff. You guys did a great job trying to represent the city's position. You guys have served faithfully over the years and that's an appreciation that this community, city and county can never really repay. So thank you guys for your time and your investment in the community. As far as where we go from here, I don't have a lot of animosity towards the county. I think the county looked at it as a business venture. And the one thing that I think they may have missed is the element of community versus dollars. But honestly, I'm interested to see where we go and I'm hopeful that we can actually salvage something positive from the negative.
I'm gonna reserve myself for last.
Well, thank everybody here for what you've done, but I've seen this happen in manufacturing where they've outsourced, and this is basically what they've done, they've outsourced your jobs. And it hurts every time you cannot get the care like you have from, you guys know your people here, you know your neighbors, and it was, you know, it just disheartened to see they, they did something like this. And they went, you know, kind of behind our backs on it. We kept giving them a, you know, what we could do for, what we could help them with and, and they just kept, it seemed like they just kept leaning more towards, no, we're gonna give this to, we're gonna outsource this. And I just don't want to see what it's gonna be like in the future.
I, I think a lot of what's been said from the council reflects a lot of my opinions on this. I, I won't go into further detail then. I will note some of mine as a political scientist, as a government instructor, as somebody that has worked for the federal government, that has worked for state government, that has worked for local government. I think part of my frustration is that two people can make this decision for the entire county. It, it only takes a motion and a second. And I don't believe in the structure of governance, a motion and a second should pass anything. Imagine if this council, a motion and a second passed any, everything. The whims would be up to really just two people. And I think that's the frustration I'm feeling. Counsel, let us move into the matter at hand. Matt, Corey, I'll turn this over to you for a second, Matt. Or you just want to hear our thoughts?
Uh, yeah, actually, I was just gonna say, we'll, we'll take whatever direction you, you give us tonight. I guess, Mayor, I was gonna let you run, run the discussion.
That seems, that seems fair as we're proud of issuing directives. Hold on, let's get the council to start real quick.
I wanted to make one more comment here. I stated that I thought that we had subsidized the operation by 200,000 to 300,000 each year. And I, and I based that on, the quote from AMR was 1.4 million. Then they raised it a little bit if they were required to provide two transfers at a time. And the subsidy has been recently 1.1 million. So there's 300,000 something.
It's, it's still a million. 1,700,000.
So that's the difference that I'm, that's where I'm getting this figure of approximately what it costs or what the estimating cost would be right now versus the subsidy. And, yeah, so I think we have made an effort to try to provide a quality service for the community at the most reasonable cost. I think we've done that.
I'll turn over and I think we've, we've got the opinion of, of our EMS staff. We're gonna discuss this for a minute and then I'll let you all speak if you'd like to. I do believe we've read your letter and we thank you for your letter.
Do we have any numbers yet as far as what it would cost and staffing levels? I mean, I think that's an important thing that us as the council should have had tonight so we can see that.
I will send out my email.
The numbers?
Yes.
I don't remember seeing that.
I, I think there's an interesting new development as well. I don't normally ask for legal advice in public. I don't know if we want to do an exec with Mr. Heim. We can always suspend the rules and add one. Um, we can always suspend the rules and add one. Would you prefer to give an opinion in public or in private on, on what we've asked you?
Either way, um, I don't know if there's any commentary after tonight or exactly which direction you intend to go.
Um, will you cut the mic for me?
Merrick, I don't think, if you want an interpretation of, of a statute, let's go into executive.
Okay. Um, can I get the council to suspend the rules for a minute?
And just in that way, I, my computer's on the grid, so I, I don't have the figures.
Motion to access, uh, rules and insert an agenda item for a executive session or council, including the mayor, the city administrator, deputy city administrator, and...
Attorney-client.
And under attorney-client privilege.
Yes.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded because this is a suspension of the rules. I do need a two-thirds majority.
If you want to do that for five minutes or 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes. Uh, the motion to suspend the rules and add an agenda item. Uh, those who will vote on the actual thing, so, um, all those in favor to suspend the rules and add an agenda item of an executive session, please show a voting sign. Motion passes. Now you can make the motion of the 10 minutes executives.
Uh, motion to, uh, recess for executive session for, uh, articles pertaining to attorney-client privilege, uh, to include the city administrator, uh, deputy city administrator and city, uh, county.
In our attorney.
And?
Yeah, attorney.
And, sorry.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, please show a voting sign. Okay.
Ron, that was you?
Yes.
So, we'll be back out at 7:30?
7:44.
6:44.
7:44.
7:44.
Tenori.
Although there is a few to show on that.
Yes, I should have. We're gonna do this better.
That's from Alberta.
Uh, we can't remember this for us. They're just introducing a statute, so I think they're... Well, how come both of them write? She's never been here, she doesn't know anything. I think you can get rid of two and then it'll... Matt said... He said he will do whichever in public order. But he just needs directions of what they want. A, yeah. 150, what? Four? No. Was that your turn? Yes. It was, well, she was still here. Three.
Two hours crash. Any mercy.
I will call this meeting back to order. We can get everyone back to order. Uh, thank you Brett, thank you for...
Thank you Brett.
And thank you for your opinion, your service, I think you're good. Counsel, do you need our attorney here for any other reason you think? Thanks Brett, thank you. Alright, let's call this meeting back to order. Let me start here as we're back, I think we have some clarity internally. Uh, we will not reveal under attorney-client privileges. We're not going to talk about any of that. But I will ask then for anyone from the fire department, if they want to speak to the counsel, want to speak on the record. Before we have our next bit of conversation.
Um, I'm Kenneth Powell, I'm deputy chief at the fire department. You've all met me previous weeks. Mainly I'm here because we want some clarity, of course, which I don't know if you can give that to us or not. But it's going to be hard for us to keep some of our less seasoned staff onboard throughout this, if we don't have some type of direction, is what we're asking for. The fire department has in some form provided EMS since 1959. And we want to be sure that we still provide that for our citizens. So, um, as far as upfront expenditures, we have everything in place. The people are there, the equipment's there, it's ours, it's sitting. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions that I can, if not, I'll get someone that can.
Thank you. I actually have a question. When you say the city owns the equipment and the city has the stuff in place, I mean, depending on where we go as far as funding and things like that, we're ready for a smooth transition?
Yes, yep, we can go...
Actually Kenneth, why don't you just tell them what we have?
I see.
Kind of what you told me and Cory when we were...
Yes.
Yeah, just told them.
Okay, we have in place, we have our drug license, so we got all the drugs that we use on the ambulance, we already have the license in our name. We have two ambulances, we have all the equipment on there, the big ticket items like the cardiac monitors, we have them, we have, I think, three of them or four, four of them. We also have the cots already, so, and all the loose supplies is already the city's. Everything in the cabinet's in there, we already paid for it, it's ours.
And the buses belong to us?
We've got two of the buses that belong to us, they're the older buses, but they're ours, and they will work just fine for in the city.
So everything needed to run the ALS, the upper services still in place, would be ours?
To run a complete service, ALS, BLS, everything we, we have it.
And counsel, when we merged at the beginning, I, or when we expanded at the beginning, I, and we got into some heated discussions whenever we were at 750,000, and I remember you said we need to cut, um, I said that, you know, the county has some equipment, but we actually have something far, far, far more valuable, and that's our personnel, point blank. You can buy a new ambulance, you can get a used one, you can go out and find ambulances. You can't go out and find this many, this many employees to run a service that are trained, that are qualified. Um, and I've said that since day one, we got the better end of that service deal, in that we have what we need at any moment in time. Um, I, I would, I would say from my perspective, uh, I would encourage the council, and I would encourage the council to encourage staff to not make a decision, um, but to really run some hard numbers, and to bring those forward.
That's what I want, I'd like to see, uh, between you guys at the station and Matt and Cory come up with some hard numbers, and if we gotta call an executive session to go over those...
You mean a special session?
Or a special session to go over those as long as before the second of September. Let's do that, if not, let's have another next council meeting.
And encourage the existing staff to just be patient with us.
Yes.
And I know that's tough to do.
Please give us a little more time.
But we'll work through it as fast as we can, we just wanted, yeah.
And we thank you very much for that.
And once again, I'm gonna sit here and open a meeting and say that we're fighting like hell for all of you guys out there, we wanna keep you, if we're gonna do what we can to keep you.
This is not what any of us wanted.
I'll, I'll go on the record and say I would support an independent, um, if, if this goes the way that it goes, and, uh, you know, part of the frustration here is we actually don't know what service AMR has, we don't know if it's two transfers and one ambulance, we don't know if it's two transfers and two ambulances, we know nothing of the service, um, that they've actually did, um, this has been part of my transparency, um, like, we don't know anything, right?
I'd say what, what we know is what was asked of us.
Right.
That's what we know.
Um, but we actually don't know anything here, um, you know, if this does, I will go on the record and say I would support, uh, a IFD EMS department for the city limits.
So, other question, just, I'm totally inexperienced when it comes to some of this stuff, are there other joint ventures, rescue, hazmat, and things like that that we have agreements with the county?
Yes, there are.
Because those agreements are with the county and not with AMR, is AMR gonna provide those services, or no?
We don't know.
That's a question.
I, I actually, uh, Merrick, can I jump in?
Yeah.
On that, um, part of the numbers you want, Cory and I will put that together, uh, with, with, uh, rescue, um, and obviously for about three days, I was gone Thursday, Friday, and most of today, Tuesday and Wednesday, and I actually called Cory from Wrigley Field on, on Friday to talk about it, um, the, uh, we, we've been talking internally about what numbers you all should see, so I, I, I get the feeling that what Cory and I have been talking about i- is what you all want to see, if there's something specific, please let us know, um, but, but we've, and God, I hate to put it this way, but we've been throwing darts at the wall, so we, we think we've got, we've got a ballpark of, of, of what it's gonna cost, and what, well, we're, we're losing a million bucks, that, that's already set in stone now. But we, we, we think we have an idea, Cory and I are gonna have to put it together, um, I, I think we're gonna need all the three weeks between the next two meetings, um, the next meeting's September 13th, uh, we can have it done by then, Cory and I might have to lock ourselves in my office to get it done, Roxanne will be involved. Uh, the fire department's gonna be involved, uh, but I, we, we, we can get the numbers you want, I think I know what it is you're wanting, and it's what we've been discussing internally.
Uh, I got one question, as far as staffing, I think I've talked, and I can't remember what I've been told, but with what we have onboard now, not counting the humble of the grant, can we, with the staff that we have on level now, can we run both types of services within the city?
Yeah, yes we can.
And not be short-staffed?
Yeah, it, and it all depends on if people stay to see that we make it to that point, and things like that, because, I'm gonna say, all these guys out here are in demand at other places, there's other counties that have called them and asked them if they'd come to work, so, there's, there's staffing there, if we can keep them there.
Okay, that's worth my concern.
I would urge counsel to move quickly on this and give them decisions, uh, having gone through this before, when the city expanded services, um, it was very worrisome, and if you want to talk about people looking for jobs, it's very hard for these people out here to continue to come to these meetings and not find out what's going on. You know, for us, we know what's going on, but for them...
It's scary for them.
I just wanna say, if we have to call a special session, let's do it.
You know, and when you sit and think about it, you go, well, how long am I really gonna wait for this, when my capers and everything will just transfer over? It's, it's very hard, and we're getting down to that time, especially if somebody has to move.
Well, that's what I agree, I, we just need to, we need to plow through this as fast as we can, making smart decisions along the way, but as fast as we possibly can, so that everybody has peace of mind, and they, you know, I mean, nobody wants that insecurity, and it's like walking on a tightrope, and nobody wants to do that, so, it's just like Mark said, you know, when you hear your company might be outsourcing and you don't know what's happening, nobody, nobody should have to endure that at their place of employment, and especially not here.
Hold on, hold on, we are, we are kind of going down a rabbit hole here, and I think we need to start directing staff at what we want.
Let me, let me ask this question, and, let me ask this question, and maybe that will help staff, hypothetically, you three, how long do you think it would take to have a rough ballpark figure, Friday, Monday, or what?
The end of the week, probably.
Well, then, if we have to have a special meeting, let's have it.
If we have to have a special meeting next Monday, let's do it.
The main thing I want everyone to hear tonight behind us is it sounds like if each of us draw a poll, that we are all in support of moving forward, so, so, that's, that's better than not knowing anything, um, you know, we all favor continuing a, a dual service.
Could we have something like possibly, possibly by month?
Expediiously as possible.
Hold on Gene, um, I agree with you Steve. Why don't we, I, I would, hey, I, I would like staff to work quickly, but I also don't want them to...
Work diligently.
Well, I want them to work diligently on top of this, um, let's see where they are on Friday, a special meeting can be called relatively quickly, um, let's see where the numbers are, let's see how comfortable they feel, let's see what staff thinks they need on time, um, he said, you know, to get these really accurate numbers, we're gonna need all the three weeks, uh, make it the rough numbers and not need the special, um, until that, so let's, let's bear with it, um, let's give staff the time they need to work, um, this is a tricky question.
I mean, I don't mean to be putting pressure on the staff, but, you know, we don't need to be dragging feet.
With, uh, with all that being said, I think that with, in the grand scheme of things, I think we probably need to discuss, uh, the fire chief issue as well. It's, we have a lot of people here, and they have nobody to look to right now, and if we, we do an interim or something of that sort, I think that we should probably look at doing that, and I don't know how you all feel about it, but I would, I would even move to suspend the rules again and go to executive session to talk about it.
I think that's something we need to address too.
That's probably a good point, I mean, things are unstable and, uh, like you need...
Sir, Ron's made a motion to suspend the rules and add a executive session under non-elected personnel, is that correct, or did I, is there any, Gene, did you second then?
Yeah, for, I make a motion that we...
Well, Ron's already made a motion, there is a second to suspend the rules and have an executive session under non-elected personnel, all those in favor?
Fifteen minutes.
No, hold on, we've gotta approve one motion before we can approve a second, uh, so all those in favor of an execu, of suspending the rules to add another executive session, hands opposed?
I think we ought to wait for the next, uh, scheduled meeting and get prepared for it, not just talk about it off the top.
Are we discussing one individual?
No, but, do you think that's not an executive session?
I'm just concerned that we're stretching it a bit, Brett's not, is Brett?
Or not the employee, uh...
No, I like it, I'm gonna say...
Discussing a candidate though, I get where you're coming from.
Give me a minute here. Yeah.
For a call.
Yeah, we generally don't suspend the rules. Counsel made the motion second today.
I see that we, I feel that Ron's, uh, sorry, I know they have it, but I think that we need to put on an agenda on... In our next meeting, what, the 13th?
Well, I mean, nothing says that, nothing says that we can't do that special on Monday or later this week then to discuss that one item, or let's see where these numbers come, and we can discuss that there as well.
And staff, all right, just proceed on their own, advertise?
Yeah, but the question I think is, is about interim and how we're going to staff that, um...
I'd rather see a motion coming, uh, agenda...
I think, I think you're right on that Carl, that we're, we're treading on some thin ground here, um, it's, I'm trying to do my parley pro in my head here. Technically, that's on there, um, the council does not have to vote in favor for an executive session here, um, but we've added it to the agenda. What? Motion would very much fail here, and that gets us out of it.
So, I made a motion for executive session for three hours.
Hold on, hold on, watch this, that, that's a really solid way to do this, Ron, that is a very solid way to get us out of this predicament we got ourselves into, um, is there a second, is there a second, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, come on, there is a second, all those in favor, please show a voting sign. Second has to vote yes, all those opposed, motion passes, our motion fails, okay, here we go, we got out of this, uh, alright, I do apologize for that to the viewers at home, this is why we tend to not suspend the rules and add agenda items, uh, literally, this is why we tend not to suspend the rules and add agenda items, it adds a lot of confusion. Donna, you're talking very loudly.
I've got two really good questions I'm asking him because I can see a problem with this whole thing.
Okay.
We just fixed it.
So, okay, we're gonna move forward here then, uh, we may have this special on Monday, we will talk about one or two items then, um, if, I will also talk, I think I know, Ron, where your point is, I'll get with, or if you wanna get with Matt.
It's fine, I understand, I understand.
I, if you wanna get with Matt, I'll get with Matt and Cory as well tomorrow and talk to you a bit, I, I think I know, I think I know and understand why you're asking what you're asking, um, and I do see some validity in it, um, but that being said, we are now in line for item A, an executive session actually on the agenda, uh, Thrive, actually, is there any other further comments or questions to the EMS? Anyone wanna say any last parting words, or?
They'll freeze paint now or for a vote please.
Um, I, I would also encourage, uh, remember until the county signs a contract, it has not signed a contract, um, it's the public, it seems like the public is upset with this decision, call your county commissioner. Call, call all three. Okay, if there's nothing else, um, we do apologize not to give you a whole lot of decisions today, but, but I think we're moving towards a direction, and I imagine at the next meeting, uh, whether that's a special meeting or, or the regular meeting, that we're gonna make a decision there. Got about right, counsel?
Give us a week.
Give us a week, stay with us.
We gotta talk to lawyers.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, item A, executive session, trade secrets.
How long do you need?
Jonathan, Liz.
Fifteen minutes, Tom.
Fifteen, I move the city council recess to executive session for fifteen minutes per to trade secrets, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen D four, the purpose of the execs, executive session is to discuss confidential data related to financial and operating affairs, and so I pledge the mayor, council, city administrator, assistant administrator, Allen County Economic Director Jonathan Curry, the regular meeting shall resume at...
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty.
Motion's debated, seconded, all those in favor?
And third.
Motion passes.
Thank you guys for your...
Thank you guys, Gary Kimball.